Oh my goodness. Come on closer, come on. Okay, good afternoon. We're giving a call this meeting to order. Okay, good afternoon or good evening. We'll call to order of the formal meeting of the 258th session of the 10th council. I'll have invocation by. Put your name for the public to.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this night. We thank you for the Lord who have come to serve your people of Pontiac. We ask that you give them wisdom. Father, give them an understanding of what's going on. How we just thank you for your peace to rest upon this meeting tonight and a spirit of unity. Because we are one people. You have called us to the city and it is your city. And so we thank you for that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Carter. Miller. Petola. Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Here.
Williams. And Chair, you have a.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I need an authorization to excuse President Williams, Pro Tim Carter, and Councilwoman Miller.
So move, support, whatever.
Roll call.
La.
Yes.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
At this time, um. Approval of the agenda, but I would ask at this time, um, that items two through eight be deferred.
So move. Or.
Roll call, Mr. President. I mean.
Mr. Clerk.
Petola.
Yes.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
I need approval of the minutes of October the 5th, 2021.
So move, support.
Roll call.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Miller. This is the approval of the minutes from, um, October 5th. Petola.
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Correction, mission of elected officials. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, is there any agenda address? No agenda address. Go to item. Number nine. Is the resolution to approve the city treasures to levy $510,000, $590 of age receivables on the 2021 winter tax roll.
So move. Support.
Roll call.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Carter. Miller. Miller.
We're not on number nine, Councilwoman Miller. Yes, ma'am.
Petola.
Yes.
Shramsky. Five yeas, no nays.
Item number 10 is a resolution to approve a zoning map amendment request, the ZMA 21-06 for parcel number 64-14-21-226-004 to amend the current site zoning C1 local business to C3 corridor commercial. Is there somebody here to present as it relates to this?
Our planning manager did present last week. He's here again, and I believe we do have the applicant here again this evening. Uh, once again, this is a project for zoning map amendment. Uh, and to reiterate what we said last week, uh, this is a applicant that has asked for no abatements or tax incentives, or this is a straight entrepreneurship deal.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Uh, yes, good evening, Pontiac City Council and Madam Mayor. Um, this property is located at 1125 North Perry. On the, say, north side of Perry and Madison and also Arlene, just south of the, uh, school complex, the middle of school and high school right there. Uh, that 18 acre site, the applicant came before the, um, uh, city council last week. Uh, had an opportunity to answer questions that they did have in regards to hours of operation, the type of business that it was. It is zone currently C1. Uh, they're planning to, uh, propose it for a warehouse and a logistics center for the automobile industry. Their major clients are the big three plus auto suppliers. And they are, uh, like I mentioned, uh, requesting, um, to go to a C3 corridor commercial zoning classification. Uh, the future land use plan, uh, does show this site in this area as a mixed use of commercial and also industrial, particularly in areas that have been historically hosted, uh, by light manufacturing warehousing as this site has done. Uh, former Pittney and Bowes, my understanding FedEx was in there for a period of time before they build out the other facility. And also it's along the major transportation route of North Perry, uh, being part of MDOT's jurisdiction to, uh, to show that there is a potential in regards to traffic getting in and out of the site, which will be using Perry as their main entry drive and exit drive for, uh, delivery trucks that average, I think, approximately 10 per day, plus then they're going to be using sprint vans for the remaining product to be distributed out to the various, uh, manufacturers and suppliers.
Thank you, Ben. We went over all this? Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a move and support?
Move. I move.
Roll call. Yes.
Miller. Petola.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item is resolution to approve zoning map amendment request, ZMA 21-07 for parcel number 64-14-30-384-016 to amend current site zoning C1 local business and P1 parking to C3 corridor commercial. Okay, Mr. Burke.
Yes, Mr. Gustafson will present again. This is for the property located on West Huron, between Genesee Avenue and Chipwell Road. Mr. Gustafson?
Right. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, as Mayor indicated, uh, we're on the south side of West Huron. Uh, it is a former, uh, bank building, the five story building that, uh, has been vacant for a period of time, uh, just west of the post office. Uh, the bank building is near the front of the site where the remaining parking lot in the back. For whatever reason, uh, the zoning map showed it, half the site zoned as C1 and the, the southern portion where the parking lot was P1. Uh, usually a lot of times a, a property is zoned in one designation, but there must have been a, a split or a combination back in the day. But, uh, we did, the applicant, uh, is looking to do a number of improvements to that area. It is planned in regards to neighborhood commercial, particularly vertical. My understanding from the applicant, they are planning to locate, um, some retail on the first floor to be identified, plus remaining floors on the upper floors to the office and utilizing the former parking area in, in putting into, uh, mini storage, uh, self-storage, which is, uh, which is a permitted use. Excuse me. It is a special exemption permit use or special land use in that district. They have, uh, they will be on our agenda for planning commission to, uh, get their approval through the SEP and also their site plan review coming into November. But we wanted to at least get this, um, before you in regards to the proper zoning to rezone this to a C3 corridor commercial.
Councilwoman Shramsky.
Yes, this is just to rezone it to C3. They will only be permitted at for uses that are in C3. Anything else will require a special exemption permit. And I've had several discussions with my residents in the meeting and we've been to two meetings already at the planning commission. So if anybody has a problem with that, please come to the November planning commission meeting. I do not at this time have a problem with it. They've been very cooperative with anything we've wanted them to change. Um, and what they are planning and they would need the special exemption permit for next month is mini storage in the back. Uh, mostly it's just details about how tall are these units, uh, where exactly will the fence be, these kinds of things. And that would be worked out at that time and with the site plan. So I have no problem with this at this time.
Okay, good. Then can I get a move and support? Roll call.
Miller. Petola. Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Okay. Okay. We will come to public comments. Councilwoman Petola.
Speaker of the night is going to be Johnny Smith Senior. If you would take the podium for three minutes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I didn't know I'd be getting up here this soon, but my, my concern is Oak Hill Cemetery. I have, uh, my parents' gravesite there and it's been just about four months now, uh, since it was messed up. And it's still messed up as far as I'm concerned. At least three times I've called the office for Oak Hill. Uh, first time I remember, uh, I was told that, uh, the concerns were more for, uh, for anyone who doesn't know it. I guess a storm came through and just tore up, uh, many parts of the cemetery. I was told the first time that, uh, there were things in the city that needed to be taken care of first. Okay, I went a few weeks. I made another call because it didn't seem to be, uh, much improvement. Uh, that call was said that, um, uh, it was in, uh, it's being inspected for insurance purposes and they had to wait till everything was a result of that, that concern. And finally, about, uh, three weeks ago, I was told, uh, one of the representatives at the office, uh, that maybe I should just come to city council and, and bring up this, uh, issue. But that's what I'm here for. My parents', um, gravesite is still overturned, um, as well as others right around in that vicinity. And I don't know if there have been, uh, previous talks about this cemetery situation or not, but this is the first time I've been here in years and, uh, that's my concern. And I'd like to know if there's, we come upon winter. Is there any, uh, plans for a resolution, uh, this problem? Anyone?
Somebody will get with you after the meeting. We can't speak with you during public comments, but we'll get with you after the meeting to talk to you.
Oh.
Thank you, Pastor Smith.
Pardon me.
We will get with you. Have a seat. We will get with you after the meeting and talk to you about it. We can't talk to you right now to give you anything during public comments.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Richard Bell. You have three minutes at the podium, sir.
Hello. My name is Richard Bell. I'm here on behalf of the Kids First Initiative. I was born, raised, and used to teach and coach right here in the city of Pontiac. Kids First Initiative is a grassroots nonprofit that was built on relationships. I'm here tonight because we're not tapping into one of our most valuable resources, our young people. We do not have enough young people from underserved communities studying and embracing the STEM fields. We're talking about science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. It's a problem here in Pontiac. It's a problem in Oakland County. It's a problem in southeastern Michigan. It's a problem all over the country and it's costly. There's economic costs. There's a social cost. There's a national security cost because very valuable voices are being left out. Six years ago, we leveraged some of these same relationships with some of you to create Kids First Initiative's STEM ignite. It's a place where students feel comfortable using creative design and three dimensional thinking. It's a place where they are using hands-on STEAM activities to learn problem solving and 21st century skills. It's a place where ideas don't have any ceilings. It's a place where our young people see themselves in some of the high paying STEAM careers. It's a place where some of our young people, the ones we have already thrown away because we said they don't like science, are using drones, robotics, artificial intelligence, and virtual reality technology to drive social change. You know the kids, the same ones we said can't do the math are using engineering design process to drive innovation. That same innovation can change Pontiac. It can change Michigan because it's changing the world around us. Do you remember the last time we were here? We had the whole floor covered with gases from the dry ice reaction. Remember when you flew the drones, the excitement on your faces, the anticipation of what was going to happen next? We are asking you to help us to bring that same experience to all of our young people. When we're out working with the students at the fairs, the churches, the schools, one question we get asked the most from the kids is, can we do more science and will you be back tomorrow? The parents always ask, where could they sign their kids up? I'm going to call on some of you, some of these same relationships that we built, to help us to bring this program to scale. Imagine the problems that we could solve if we put the full weight of the city government behind this program. I'm talking about changing lives. I'm talking about building a 21st century workforce. I'm talking about changing the trajectory of the city of Pontiac. It all starts with a spark. Help us to ignite that STEM spark in our young people. Again, my name is Richard Bell. I'm here on behalf of the Kids First Initiative and it's been an honor to speak to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Our next speaker is Mr. Jose Yabara. And if I mispronounced your name, I do apologize.
It's all right. It's, uh, Jose Yabara. And I wanted to speak to you about the, uh, cable technology strategy that you have on your agenda for today. What have you done to hold Comcast's feet to the fire to make sure that their infrastructure is upgraded so that this technology will be feasible, not just for city hall, but for the citizens of Pontiac? We were talking about children just a little bit ago and a lot of children don't even have the basic needs that they have, that they need to get their schoolwork done as far as technology goes. What have you done as a council and as a mayor to hold Comcast's feet to the fire so that everyone gets the same opportunity, not just city hall? Because this is something that it has to be addressed. Because if you guys get this, uh, what do they call it? Tightrope technology? And the Comcast technology outside is still the old technology, it's not going to matter. You're still going to get the same junk you got before. So I've seen it time and time again as an employee of the city of Pontiac where roads have been paved, infrastructure has been neglected. The road gets tore up to repair something that should have been repaired while the road was taken apart. I'm asking you this because we have to look at future generations. Not just of today, not just what can be done for city hall, but what can be done for the city Pontiac's children as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Johnson. You're up next with three minutes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you in the audience and those of you that aren't watching by television. My concern again here this evening is I'm going to direct it at you, Mayor. Uh, on numerous occasions I've asked you and I went to your building and safety department over the last year or so, even more regarding 253 East Pike Street. The place is laden with old refrigerators, junk, uh, trucks, uh, the scrap hauler that hauls in there on a daily basis. Uh, he scatters his debris and stuff up and down Patlock from mechanic back to that building. He, uh, takes care of his refrigerants, uh, in, in the middle of the night so that, uh, you, most people won't see or smell it. I smell it because it goes right into my bedroom window. And I'm sick and tired of this, Mayor. I'm sick and tired of this activity going on at 253 East Pike. Those junk trucks, that scrap hauler, all the debris that's inside the fence. It seems that our building officials can't or won't do anything about it. They've indicated to me that they've asked the sheriff to go up on Mechanic Street, west of Patlock. There's nine or 10 cars parked on both sides of the street full of debris and crap and whatever else. Uh, uh, no proper license, no insurance owned by the same individual. If we can't get the sheriff to go by and tag these cars, then maybe I should call the state police. They'll send somebody to look at this. But this situation has been ongoing too long. We need to do something about it ASAP. This is the gateway to city hall. A lot of people travel from there, 59, Patlock Street to Pike Street. And to look at that debris and activities of that scrap hauler there, those junk trucks, it's not fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Karen Jorgensen, you would be next. We have three minutes at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Karen Jorgensen. I reside at 35 North Saginaw Street, uh, co-owner of Pontiac's Little Art Theater and the Green Room Cafe. I woke up Saturday morning and I saw a small army of young people claiming up the downtown. I don't know who they were, but I'd love to give them credit for it. Um, it was really a wonderful sight. We had a magnificent, uh, Oktoberfest downtown, so that obviously helped us out in, uh, making the downtown look presentable. I was also very happy to see the amount of sidewalks that are being redone downtown and throughout. So I thank, um, DPW for overseeing that. I also noticed, uh, yesterday that the bus stop in front of the Phoenix Center looks absolutely spectacular. Um, Tim Travis, uh, who was hired by Goldner Walsh, had his team over there yesterday and, um, it's a glorious thing to look at, but we still have a lot of issues to take care of with that bus stop. I'm also very curious as to where we are with the marijuana licensure. Um, as a business owner, building owner, um, this is going on for years. It's not only, uh, having a huge economical impact upon the downtown and our city. It's, uh, it's way beyond, um, I, I hope that we can expedite this before the year ends. I'd like to invite all of you to Pontiac's Little Art Theater. We are going to be, um, presenting Rocky Horror Picture Show on the Friday and Saturday before Halloween. That's the 29th and 30th. So if you want to get dressed up, come and have a good time. We'd love to see you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Billy Swayzer. You're not going to speak tonight, am I? Um, Veronica Taylor, you would be next. Three minutes at the podium.
Good evening, City Council and the mayor's office and you all out there in TV life. First, I got a, a count of horse. Uh, I need you all to please don't forget, come here October 16th. The prosecuting attorney, Karen McDonough, event Joe, Justice Rest. Justice. Y'all got to forgive me. We'll be at Murphy Park here on at from 12 to 4:00. We need all y'all to come out so y'all can be able to see what the prosecuting attorney's office have to offer now to help us get better here in this city. Thank you and may God bless you.
Madam Chair, that concludes our public comment for the evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Petola. Next on our agenda is closing comments. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Good to hear people's comments and I wanted to remind people that the parking lot repair is going on here and, uh, we want to get a brand new parking lot for Bowen Center as well as some other renovations that are going on throughout our buildings. A lot of our staff have been working very hard. Counsel, you deferred the demolitions for batch 17 of the demolition. Uh, just remember you passed the asbestos, so that's moving forward. So we don't want the asbestos laden houses to be open, uh, waiting for demolition. So I hope you all will defer to it. We'll look at that for next week, uh, so that we don't have that being a problem. And I thank all those who went out to, uh, Maynard Court, uh, to clean up. My deputy mayor was a part of that. Uh, we're seeing that that is egregious situation. Our court enforcement is looking on that as well as other properties owned by that particular, uh, property manager. Uh, it's terrible when people have, uh, to live in situations like that. I'm going to get to the bottom of this and look and see what we can do with court enforcement to make sure that those people are not victimized by, um, uh, slum landlords. But I do want to turn to a number of things that are going on in the city. Uh, and one of those is a, a webinar we're having tomorrow about restoring retiree healthcare. Many of you know that getting healthcare back to our retirees was taken away by the emergency manager. Uh, it's something that I've been working on. It's very dear to my heart. We're almost there. And so tomorrow we're going to have this webinar. The flyers are on our website as well as Facebook page for those who are interested and have, um, or know a retiree who may be interested. And we're going to answer such questions as, when will the healthcare finally be restored? Is it this year? Uh, as we said, or is it being pushed back to 2022? Uh, some people say realize that there has been a delay. They want to know why retiree healthcare is delayed and who is accountable for that? We're going to let you know, uh, who needs to get on the ball and get this going. Uh, some people are eligible for $20,000 opt-out payments. They want to know when they're going to get that. And they want to know what is the city council's role and the proposal I made to permanently increase monthly pension payments for our retirees. So for those of you, uh, who are interested in that, uh, pay attention. We're going to do that, uh, tomorrow as a town hall. Also, other town halls, very informative. You've heard me talk about, uh, the ARP money, American Rescue Plan, the $37.7 million. And we have scheduled the first of the town halls. That's going to be Monday, October 18th. Particularly for districts, uh, one and two, people in those districts. It's going to be right here at Bowen Center at 6:00 PM. It is in person. We will have a lot of interaction. We want to hear your ideas about how we should spend that money and have input and collaboration. And one of the young ladies who talked about, or I think it was Mr. Yabara, who talked about smart city, uh, bringing Comcast then and bringing more smart city initiatives. We're going to talk about how American Rescue Plan money can be used for that. So if you're interested in that discussion, this is the first of the live town halls. Uh, I had another one by Zoom, but we're going to be having several others because I want everybody to have a part in that discussion. We want your input, your ideas. Uh, and also one of the things I'm very happy to have restored is a youth center for our youth. Uh, right now, we had tried over the summer to do many pop-up sites. Boys and Girls Club found that that was too busy for them.
Good time, Madam Mayor.
So we're going back to the golf drive.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
No comment.
Attorney Sharp. Councilwoman Miller.
Uh, I got several complaints, Mayor. I spent my whole day in my district with complaints. First one is Gary Place and old, old Oak apartment. We need your code enforcement to go in that building. That building, that building, you almost need to clean out. Where's your old oak? One of the constituents called me yesterday. She's a diabetic. She's sick, and she didn't have a refrigerator. I was going to go buy one one day myself. I hadn't found one. But thankfully, your staff did find something for her. They're very good at what they do, but they don't know, these people are suffering over there. Old Oak, in fact, one of the managers told me that if I didn't get off the phone, if I didn't get off the phone, she was going to hang up on me. Actually, I'm an elected official. I'll come over there with the whole police force. If you don't find us later, refrigerator, because she's a diabetic. She had stored her medication once. She had to throw it out. She went, spent some more money for the refrigerator. It's a long story, Mayor. Old Oak, because I only got short time in Perry Place, you need to see your code people there. It's a mess. I've got pictures to show you. Okay, then I'm going to go to, and I know it was a great event, and I don't want to spoil it for everyone, but I work for the constituents. My constituents over by Northern had a nightmare last week with the game. I had three calls over there, First Street, Second Street. They parked on both sides of the street. One lady said she had an emergency. She couldn't even get out. She couldn't get out. Traffic on both sides. They even, she said, they even had the nerve to park in their grass, in the yards. Everybody, so many people at the school. We need to talk to Captain Ewan, what they're going to do with the next game, or whoever's over there. Or maybe it's the school district. I don't know for sure right now how they're going to work this out because the constituents over there are very teed about it. And I would be too. I mean, they're all on my lawn, up and down the street. You can't get out. They couldn't get out. And she said, fight broke out in her yard. The third thing is the manhole over on Winsong. I'm going on down the street. Winsong Apartment, they called me. There's a manhole over there, a manhole, and it's real big. They need someone to come over there. It's flooding back into their apartment. I haven't been on it yet because she called me late this evening before I got here, but I will be going in tomorrow. She needs someone from DPW to come over and see this because they got a problem with it. That's at Winsong on fighting. And as far as the healthcare, I look forward to being on Zoom with you tomorrow because I really do want to know whose fault it is. Because I don't know anything about being fault. We never was brought anything. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Councilwoman Sharamsky?
It appears Councilwoman Miller has met my nightmare owners and managers.
Yes, I have.
They own Monroe Manor also.
Yes, they do.
And if anybody's been on my Facebook page, Councilwoman, it's District 2, Councilwoman Megan Sharamsky, please look. I don't have all the photographs on there, but it's horrendous. And I'd like a status update on that because it's uninhabitable, and it's very dangerous. And this has been going on my entire, almost 17 months in office. Code enforcement has done everything possible, but the follow-through from another department, yeah. I'm not folding all individuals, but really, they do need to be shut down. Something needs to happen. These people are irresponsible. I'd like to run them out of town on a rail. Now, Maynard Court, I got a call from Barry Earl and said, come look at these people's living conditions. I get there, and I was wearing my T-shirt because I was on my way out to do door-to-door. I get there, and there's a pile of trash big as a room. It really stunk, and I could handle it until they dug a shovel in it, and I was gagging. And Interim Deputy Mayor Holland and I were gagging, and thank you for not putting that car on mine. You shouldn't. But I did about six contractor bags myself. Perry Earl was there, Marcus Bowman was there, Brandy Chambers, Perry Earl's mother was there picking up Parkmont. And I'm sure I missed someone, but Mr. Brett Barker from my district was there. That's horrendous. And do we have a dumpster over there yet, or a front-end loader? Because, and you need a hose. Yeah, okay. So that's what I have to say. And I'd also like a status update at some point, Mayor, on Rossshire Court because as it stands now, the man finally did get a rehab agreement, but then he abandoned it and tried to sell the property, which I immediately notified the city, and they said, can't do that. So now the lawyers are talking, and from my understanding, it will be made to fix the building that has two to three privately-owned units in it, and the other one should be demolished, and I hope we follow through with that. Good evening.
Councilwoman Doris Taylor-Burks?
President. I am going to have Halloween party for the children. And it's going to be held on the 23rd of October from 5:00 to 7:00. The children's ages are 12, preschool to 12 years old. And they will be participating in different activities. Best holiday costume will get $200 gift card. Second place is $100 gift card, and third place is $50 gift card. And $100 best truck decoration. That will be held at Glenwood Plaza. They are working very hard every day to get that plaza fixed. And it's looking good over there so that the kids can enjoy themselves on that day. There is no charge, and the ages are from preschool to 12 years old. I do have a couple of copies here with me. Someone wants to take one home with them. And I can have some more. I'll bring some more next week if anybody wants them. So to let you know that they are working very hard over there. It's looking really nice over there. And I'm just so, so thankful that it started to happen, and it's going to get better. So I want to leave you with this. No one can make you feel inferior without your commitment. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Peetla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to share with everybody, we all got an email regarding Pontiac High School homecoming. That is the one that disrupted streets 2, 3, 2nd, 3rd, 4th over there on Arlene, and people were parked in the driveways. But one thing I want to remind everybody, if you have somebody that parks and blocks your driveway with a vehicle while they disappear, you can call the deputies. They don't have a right to block your driveway. They will tow your car. I had a deep, in-length conversation with the school lazy on officer or deputy this morning. He had called me, the lights are out, and we need to get those lights dressed. And he had asked me if I could help him with that part of the public safety issue. And also, he got a copy of the email that was sent to the external email for the council. I forwarded it over to the captain and asked him if they could address it. He forwarded it over to McDougal, and McDougal is arranging. He did have reserve officers there to help with the meeting, but now he's asking for additional officers. There's only one more game that will be held at the new Pontiac High School football field, and that shouldn't be anything that we had with the homecoming. So that's a good thing. But there is one thing on our agenda I want to share with you. And it's a concern that I've had with my residents over here in District 3. And Ms. Jorgensen and I were talking about it today in our packet. Last week, if you remember, I told you guys they didn't want you to come to the City Council meeting for a very long period of time. Those banquet chairs are still in there. I know I heard some say that maybe the cable advisory should get together, and then I heard some say that the cable advisory shouldn't get together, that they need to settle this. I also talked to DPW today, and the deputy director told me that they have discussed some concerns. Because you know what? When you sit in these chairs, we put our arms on these chairs to stand up. You will not be putting your arms on a chair to help you stand up because they want you to use banquet chairs that have no arms. The banquet chairs where when you go to position yourself, you change your position. You're leaning against the arms. You won't be doing any of that because you will have a banquet chair. They're sitting behind you, and they're sitting over here, and you can't. They're trying, they're called trapeze banquet chairs. I had a couple of them at my house. We got rid of them after two years because there is no padding. You feel the comfort on the padding on your legs? You won't have that either. You'll have the very uncomfortable chairs, no arms, no padding. And there's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Peetla.
You're welcome.
I'm going to ask you all to just bear with me this evening because I have to, I need to clear the records for those of you who feel your elected officials are not doing their job, which I take offense to. This council has had to deal with and make some tough decisions. As it relates to budget matters, if you're not of the understanding of what it entails of a legislative branch of government, it is our fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the funds are allocated and properly appropriated. And we have taken painstaking oversight to ensure the process is being adhered to. And if you don't understand the process, I suggest you take time to understand what it means. This council has restricted $3.5 million for the Youth Recreation Center. We have, with good faith, tried to be good stewards. It was the action of the Ninth Council to place the ballot initiative to have a millage for the Youth Recreation Center. So it would be my hope that the next administration and council work collaboratively, and collaboratively is the key word, to honor and give our children a first-class youth center. I hear about community benefits. It was the Ninth and Tenth Council who proposed community benefits agreements, which were not adhered to. Whenever this council has tried to right a wrong, it has always come with opposition. Lastly, let me touch upon public safety. And that's where you need to research the budget hearings. This council has always prioritized public safety. In addition to what was budgeted, this council amended the budget to bring forth seven additional deputies to the tune of $966,000 to ensure the well-being and safety of our city, as well as code enforcement. And I could go on. But when you're out here promoting your agenda, make sure it's factual. In closing, you have to be a good listener to be a good leader. And what is the difference between a career politician and an elected official? And with that, I will say good night at 7:45. 7:45.